Pledge of the flag, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its invisible but primitive nation of us all.
Thank you. Welcome everyone to the June 7th meeting. We've got a lot on the agenda tonight. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of May 24th. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and disbursement of fines. We have a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The first item we have, Lou, we have a budget amendment 2017. Steve, you're gonna read it. 2017-08, it's a budget for $5,475 for the insulation of the dimmer circuitry upstairs in the activity room that we went ahead and moved forward and we put all the dimmer lights. Those were $5,475. Can you give us some detail on that?
We'll be coming out of fund balance and we're gonna increase expenditures in the municipal buildings and capital in that amount we set for the dimmer oil, leave you alone.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment 2017-08?
So moved.
And a second. Any discussion on that? Only thing I can say, it was well due.
And thank you Commissioner Bromel for bringing it up.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Budget amendment 2017-09, I wanted to mention this was, we had funded police vehicles and equipment in our current fiscal year 17. We were gonna go ahead and borrow money to pay $305,000 based upon, on our fund balance, we're gonna go ahead and move forward and just pay the vehicles off. So it'd be $305,000. So we'd have to make a budget amendment to pay the vehicles off, which will also save us for the next five or six years in our next future budgets for X amount of dollars. So can you give us the detail on that, Steve?
Yes, we had budget $305,100 for purchase of the six vehicles to be funded through borrowing. We purchased them at a much lower price, $237,500. So we decided to make that a cash purchase and not finance that. So of course that puts a little added pressure on expenditures for current year, but it saves, like you said, the upcoming five years, which would put into the remainder of the debt service for a 60-year loan.
Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment 2017-09?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the vehicles going from borrowing to just going ahead and paying for them? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Lou, I think you're on for the ordinance 5-2017, fiscal year 2018 budget. We had a public hearing, a special hearing on May the 24th. So we've had two weeks. Now we're ready to adopt the budget. So any additional information, Lou?
No, this budget, as it's presented tonight for adoption, creates a, or funds the entire budget for fiscal 18 under a tax rate of .6356, which is five cents higher than the current tax rate for real property tax, and also increases the business personal property tax to $11 to $21. The learned stories are not affected by this particular ordinance. I would ask that the board adopt this ordinance and this funds for fiscal 18.
Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 5-2017 fiscal year budget 2018 budget?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the budget itself? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Lou, your report. Okay, next one I have is ordinance 6-2017. This ordinance was presented for introduction rate point four and reduces the sewer rate where customers using 30,000 gallons more or less by 11 percent. The rates are laid out in here, the changes from the 9,000 gallons minimum usage would be from 75 to 67.23. Out of town rates obviously are double the rate, 134.46. The rate for 9,000 to 9,001 to 30,000 would go from 839 to 747, and of course 14.94 per out of town rate per thousand gallons. I would recommend the board adopt this sewer rate, which would reduce to 11 percent, I mean 11 percent for 30,000 gallons or less users of the system.
Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 6-2017 ordering sewer rates to deduct, have a reduction in our sewer rates by 11 percent?
All same, Lou.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the sewer rates? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I have is resolution R4, personal property cap. The personal property cap, this resolution provides that there is a cap of $25 million on the assessment of personal property applied into town by the Department of Assessments and Taxation. It's not exempted by law, and it'd be taxed at the rate of $1.21 per $100 of assessment. This personal property cap would take effect July 1, 2017. I would recommend the board adopt resolution R4, 2017, to increase the cap on the personal, on business personal property tax to $25 million.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution R4-2017 personal property cap?
So moved.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Do we have some discussion on the personal property cap? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is the refuse disposal fee. The refuse disposal fee will be changed in order to, for the cost, offset the cost of contracting with Waste Management for collection of recyclables and trash services. The rate will go to $124.08 to be collected by the finance department, that's annually, to be collected by the finance department quarterly at $31.02. This rate was in, let's look at previous. Okay, 26.52 is increased to 31.02. I'd recommend that the board enact resolution 5-2017, increasing the refuse disposal fee to 31.02 per quarter.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution R5-2017 disposal fee?
I don't know.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? I just wanted to mention that I had Louis and Steve provide for me the contract with Waste Management, also with the bills earlier this week. I reviewed them, and I really wanted to make sure that nowhere along the line were they adding any additional fees into our fees, and the answer was I couldn't find any. So I was very pleased to find out that everything looked fantastic for them. So I was very pleased with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I have is a resolution R6, 2017. This resolution updates the fees for non-residential and residential review fees. Site plans less than one acre would be increased to $1,000. Site plans one acre or less than five acres, $1,000 per acre. Site plans greater than five acres or less than 20 acres, $5,000 base fee plus $1,000 per acre for each acre exceeding five acres. Site plans exceeding 20 acres, $8,000 base fee plus $1,000 per acre for all acreage exceeding 20 acres. Residential review fees for site plans would be $200, should be PDU, and infill lots of records would be $500. In addition, this resolution also would adopt, was called a development expense agreement. This would be an agreement between the town developer, any land developer who approaches the town of Elton, to pledge the, if all costs incurred by the development or review of that development and reviews of site plans of that nature would be recouped by the town rather than by the taxpayers, wouldn't put the burden on the taxpayers, the developers would be bound in by agreement to pay for all those costs. I'd recommend that the board adopt resolution R6, 2017, increasing those fees and also adopting the development expense agreement to be implemented by the building office.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution R6-2017 developmental fees in agreement?
So moved.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Aye.
Yes.
Does it matter if my name is spelled wrong?
I'm sorry?
Does it matter if my name is spelled wrong? I think we had it right, it went out there.
No, 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 I'm right after we do one session.
Yeah.
This resolution?
It is.
What number? Oh, R6, 2017, I'll bring it up, just the first one.
The comment that I wanted to make is that we're gonna take an agreement that we actually borrowed from the town of Northeast, so I wanted to make sure that the mayor of Northeast knew that we had one of his developmental agreements, and I wanted to give him kudos, but we're gonna implement that for the town of Elton. What we found, not in all cases, but in some cases, when we have very difficult projects and we're reviewing them, we're getting these projects reviewed by, we charge the developer a certain amount for us to take a look at the project and review it, but if he keeps coming back and forth to us, and there's many projects that do, it costs us, or costs our taxpayers additional money for our engineer to take a look at those, to take a look at those projects. So in this case, all that dollar amount would be passed on to the developer himself instead of us eating those, could be tens of thousands of dollars in additional costs. So we're just trying to figure out ways that we can help protect ourselves.
I think Lou has got it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is matter pressing before the board is the collective bargaining agreement with the Elton Police HPL Lodge 124. This collective bargaining agreement is presented tonight for the board's ratification. It's a result of negotiations between the FOP leadership and of course the town of Elton, including myself, the refold on downs and our HR consultant. This agreement is for the period fiscal 18 through fiscal 21, it's a four-year agreement. Adjustments to the consumer price index will be made for fiscal 19 and 21, and it'll skip this year, incur for 19, skip 20 into 21. Town will pay an officer overtime rate for hours exceeding 84 hours per day period, including planned vacation, and include personal time as hours worked, this is put in because many of the officers take planned vacations per time off, and they get a subpoena for court or because of some criminal investigation or other pressing matter with the police department get over extra hours. Under the Fair Labor Standards Act, the town is only legally obligated to pay them for only overtime hours or hours compensation, or compensation for hours actually worked. This gives them a concession for the hours, extra hours that they would work based on the deed by the police department. Town Development implemented deferred retirement option plan, explained this to the board. Deferred, this is called a drop program. The drop program is currently in effect by state police and also by people that are in the Maryland retirement system, not as state police, but as other police officers in that system. Allows an officer who reaches 25 years tenure to retire, but actually to continue working for up to a period of five years in which he would be paid, but the benefit, the retirement benefit would be in a separate account, and at the end of the five years, assuming he worked the whole five years, he would receive the benefit of his retirement as lump sum, and then continue at 50 percent of whatever his retirement rate was for five years.
I assume you work around.
I'm sorry, I keep saying here she.
Here she.
Okay, we've got a lot of here she's here. Okay, the town added punitive damages, exclusion, exemption, endorsement to our fiscal 18 budget policy. This provides and never did previously, but will now, where officers who are involved in, under the colors of their duty, certain activities and during important court action might bring punitive damages against an officer, not offensive damages, but punitive damages, and this will protect them up to $250,000, given the fact that it was a criminal act or anything of that nature. The terms and conditions included under this previous, under this contract are the same as it was the previous agreement. Any other terms in there are the same. The FOP did both in favor of accepting the terms of this collective bargaining agreement. I would recommend to the mayor and commissioners that they also accept it so we can fully ratify this agreement and get it to the FOP.
Do we have a motion to approve agreement with the FOP Lodge 124 for the agreement from 2018 to 2021? Do we have a motion?
The second.
And a second. Any discussion? The only discussion I wanted to make is I just wanted to, what year did the town residents vote in favor of collective bargaining for the, for the FOP, or the FOP, what year, what's that? Do you hear that?
I hit the.
Seven or eight?
No, seven or eight. It's probably prior to this.
It was 2006.
The FOP, I mean not the FOP, the collective bargaining, it actually is the labor law. They voted in favor of a labor law that provided for collective bargaining, and the developmental defined as detention plan. The town subsequently, based on the referendum and approval by the voters of the town of Elton, did develop a labor law, codified that, and also subsequently codified a defined pension system that applies to all sworn officers in the police department.
Very good. That was my only comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution 7-2017.
We'll call Ms. Minner, who is our grant, grant person?
The first resolution is for community legacy grant application for the downtown facade improvement project. This is a facade grant that the town has received several of over the years, and has been very successful with assisting folks in the downtown with making facade improvements on their property. 50/50 match is required, minimum 50/50 match is required for those who want to participate. We're requesting $75,000 from the community legacy grant fund for this project.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve resolution R7, 2017 downtown facade improvement project?
All same, Lou.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Mary Jo, can you tell me how many dollars in grants we've received?
We're at about $550,000 right now with just under $3 million in downtown improvements. We have two big ones coming up right now that's gonna really raise that price on the improvement side, that are in the state's hand for final approval. So it's just, it's a wonderful program, and it's all of a sudden everyone's wanting to take advantage of it again, like at the start, so we're investing the $75,000 rather than the $50,000.
And I think it's important that everyone knows, predominantly for several streets in the town of Elton, but it reaches, it reaches out for the whole.
Downtown business district.
The business district, which it includes a lot more than just downtown. So anyone that has a business, a little bit on the outside, should always reach out to our Main Street Committee and Chamber Alliance and find out if they're eligible for that. Any, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second resolution is for the strategic demolitions, smart growth impact fund grant. This grant is for $125,000 in order to make some repairs and restoration of the brick work at the corner of North and Main, at the Lions Building and at 110 North Street. We're experiencing some deterioration of the bricks and mortar on both the sidewalks, the steps, the tubes going into the building. And also, we're gonna redesign the town square and make it a little more usable by creating a central circle of brick in the middle where the Christmas tree can then be placed, have benches around the circle so that events like music on Main are a little more comfortable for folks to sit and enjoy, and even in times when there's no special events, it'll make for a much more pleasant experience in that town square.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve resolution R8, 2017, strategic demolition for a project at 101 East Main Street?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this hospital project? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's see. My report, I wanted to mention, we were very fortunate, the town of Elton, working with the Elton Chamber Alliance, we were able to get a very good guest to come to our town last week, and we hosted a concert at the Elton High School auditorium. We were very fortunate that we as a team, as a group, were able to raise $4,500 to help pay for the Elton High School marching band's uniforms. It was a wonderful event. It was an absolutely wonderful event. I just wish more people was there. I think we had, at one time, I think it's close to 200 people that was in the auditorium, but the auditorium holds 600 people. It would have been, it would have been a great thing if it would have been fully sold out. But it was, I really appreciate Jacob Young. Jacob was a, is a daytime award-winning actor in the soap business. He's also moving forward with his career in music, but we had three fantastic acts there, and I'd like to ask the board's permission to pursue this a little bit further and maybe see how we can host maybe four, maybe four events a year in that auditorium, and the concept of this would be helping the needs of our community. So this first one, we were able to help the Elton High School marching band get their new uniforms. I'm very, I feel great that we were able to do that. Maybe the next one would be the Lions Club is asking us for help. Maybe the Rotary. Maybe it's the J.C.'s. Maybe it's the Elton Little League. Maybe it's junior football. But I think that we could put a venue on, whether it's a musical venue, maybe we, maybe we put a play on, maybe we do a comedian. I know Earl wants to be the stand-up, wants to make his debut. He's talked about making his debut as a comedian. And I think he, I know he could do well at it. So I believe that we could, as my wife said, she said you should call it the Hope Tour. And I said the Hope Tour, and she said, helping our people of Elton achieve what they write. And maybe we can really get that going in a positive way. It's a no cost, other than for people to participate in this, and I think it just brings us all together as a community. It was a very, I'm telling you, I was floored by the talent that was in this facility, and it was a shame we didn't have a sellout, but I was very, very pleased, and our acts were wonderful. So I'm kinda looking at the board, and we don't have to vote on it, but are we all okay to move forward with that? Very good. That's all I have to report. Mary Jo, you're on.
Okay, I have a couple things. I'm sorry, I made so much on the agenda. But first of all, I think, I have mentioned this before, and Commissioner Bromel brought it up to me also, is getting rid of this green bar. I think it's available if the public would like to see it. If we could be sent an email, is good enough. We're looking ways to save money. So this paper, I don't know how many people use it still, or, I'm looking at that.
No. Are we the only board that gets it?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Are we the only ones that get it?
I'm assuming we are.
The check register is printed on 8F by 11, that's available to the public.
Yeah, so that would be simple, and let's do away with some paper, save the trees, and save some costs.
Are you guys okay getting that email?
If it comes with email, I have no problem with it, because at least we are getting the cost and the payouts of the town of Elton. It should be somewhere, we should be getting something.
Yeah.
And we receive that? Can we receive this electronically?
I'm not sure how that would play, because the size, how legible would be on that.
Or say we have a hard copy that's just not on the particular format?
We do say. And is it essential for all the information that's on this green bar to be printed, or can you pick and choose what we need to see? The green bar is, there are two green bars we reported there. One is the check register, which is simply the, the payee and the dollar amount and the check number. The other report is all of the accounts that are charged, because any given check will be charged to multiple accounts. That gives you a handle of both, the checks are gonna have to be signed each evening, each meeting evening, and the other is what accounts are being charged.
So is there any way that, I mean, you can simulate the same information on this type of paper, or no?
Well, I just reduced it down. So what if you had the green bar available at our option, but yet send us something that's a synopsis of this in some type of way? Would that be sufficient? We'll see what the system will generate as far as what reports can do. At least it can only print, we can certainly print one and then reduce that and tell them whatever they were, scan that and send it to you. That will save on the number of reports in there. As far as the initially being generated on 8F 11, I'm not sure. Got to check with our software person. It's not a real new software system, it's an old IDM system, and you're right, where probably won't wax around using green bar.
So we have to change software system?
Well, but for this purpose, if you're looking to save a green bar paper being distributed, you can certainly reduce it and put a 8F, a standard for you guys, certainly port it that way. That would be an immediate kind of a statement.
I mean, I would, yeah, I would.
Yeah, and then when it comes out to be, and it's impossible to read or something, that's a different story, but I don't think, I don't know what programs, it's like QuickBooks, if you could just run a different report.
But we'll, we'll work on it.
Yeah, we'll work with our software person.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Also, the truck sign that's on North Street here, it seems like this week we have had several trucks. Do you think there's any way, evidently somewhere out in the county, there is a truck, no truck sign, but it has flashing lights on it? Do you think it's possible we could ask State Highway if we could get something like that there, so that the trucks actually see it? Because I originally had to look for it when we was there, that say no trucks coming that turn.
Wait, wait trucks.
The way, yeah.
Actually, believe it or not, I met with Jeff Wensley, Assistant District Engineer out of Testertown, and the sign that is up there now is no longer used by State Highway. It doesn't meet their standards anymore. They agreed to leave it there because of their truck problem. I will ask the district engineer if they have an alternative means of notifying trucks, because they wouldn't use that type of sign. I'm not sure if they have, I doubt they have a flashing sign. Normally what State Highway would implement, because it's a distraction, motorists, but I assume they have an alternative sign that's more visible or that for truck traffic.
Okay, thank you. And I hope, you know, we really move forward with the smart meters. And I hope, you know, we really move forward with the smart meters. We've had different companies come out, we've seen what they have to offer, but we really need to move forward. And the last thing, tomorrow night is a make-up car show that rained out two weeks ago, and we have D&amp;J Entertainment, that's the new name, I like that. But it is Commissioner Piner and John Brumel, who is Commissioner Brumel's husband. Fantastic, so if you don't want to come out for the cars, come out and put a lawn chair and listen to them sing. John does everything from Elvis to Do-Up to all that kind of stuff.
Forty artists tomorrow night, and Earl's already made it to Michigan and brought Motown back.
Motown back, there you go. So I'm looking forward to it, so come on out and see them. And Michelle, would you send an email to the, to the town employees to tell them that we're there? Thank you. And that's all I have.
Earl?
First of all, I would like to thank the board members and the staff members and the partners for a job being done for the budget this year. I know I'm very, very, I'm one that's always against any increase, but I know they've done everything they could to make this budget as small as possible, so thank you very much. And for the concert, I really enjoyed myself the concert. There's a lot of local talent around here that some people really need to hear them, because I think they're, they're outstanding on Saturday, so I just will say that. As far as the parking wrecks, parking wrecks are almost at their capacity on this fourth dog for the summer, and that's looking real good for the program, parking wreck programs. I just talked to the staff yesterday. And I'm just happy to see the way we're moving as far as through the parking wrecks department. Other than that, if I have anything, nothing else, come down to the park and have some fun.
Earl?
Just two items. Number one, we were fortunate on last Thursday, June the first, for the town board and members of the administrative staff to extend outreach to Elton High School. We met before an AP class, a history class, a never outstanding group. It was good that we were able to convey information to them, because as most of you know, when you're in a classroom in history, it's not anything about the governing body where you live. And I think they received a lot of information, basically from police department and water and sewer, and exactly what the town does. Of course, they wanted to see the face of the mayor, they didn't know who he was, but I'm just kidding you for that, Ron. But we had a great time going to Elton High School.
That really was, one guy just brought that up, Sean.
And then on the other side, one of these towns, you have a workshop or whatever, I think we need to be a little bit more definitive what our trash and refuse hall does, when they go around and collect things, we see things, but there's certain things we don't understand, and I don't think those things that you understand exactly what they do either.
Okay.
If you don't mind. And that's it.
Jean?
Oh, I actually have nothing, except I want to wish Earl and John luck for sunshine tomorrow.
Very good. This is the time that we open up the floor for the public to come down. Come on down, Miss Diane here.
Doctor, come down.
You're good. I think we got a small crowd tonight. If you'd like to stand, you're fine.
I just want to thank the town and the Alliance for the great show that they did on the first, and I have to say that I'm very sorry that the high school that benefited from this had no visible recognition there. They may have had excuses, I don't know, but to have 200 people show up for such a concert to help the high school band get uniforms was very disheartening. They did a good job, they got their uniforms, but the town of Elton and the school need to get behind these projects. There was no representation that I know of from the school board for Elton High School, except the bandleader and the people from, kids from the band. They did a great job performing. They got up and performed, they signed for their supper, and they did a good job. And I'm very disappointed in the school board and Elton High School higher-ups.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jess?
Hello?
You'd either come down or stand up?
No.
Come on down. Give your address.
214 Mike Drive. I'm here again, because we are here, our community is here about the speed bumps, and I'm sure everyone has seen the news and the papers and everything, and was here to say again, we need to get this under control, the speeding in the neighborhood is out of control. That could have been a person, yes, it was a dog, but it was horrible, I'm a dog lover, but that could have been a kid, and it's an ongoing issue constantly, and this time someone actually lost a life. Yes, it was an animal that it was uncalled for, and we need either police help or some kind of speed bumps, something to help with this. I know I may get in here with other things to take care of, but I wanted to make sure I did come in.
I think we're moving in that direction.
Okay.
In both cases.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Come on down, Mr. Lemon, or you can stand up, whatever you want to do.
By the way, we have a musical talent right up here.
We do?
No.
Will you sing us all a chorus?
Get me some business cards and start painting.
After tomorrow night, it'll be ten a.m.
Thank you. I've seen a picture of you, I haven't seen you in person, I've seen a picture of your group. Your reputation is all over town. Anyway, a couple of things I want to bring up. One is, a couple of months ago, we got into Trendy Episcopal Church in the Woodardville, and we talked to Mr. Downs, and he's still looking at it from his perspective. But I'd like to ask the town to work on resolving that issue. Just to repeat, the water goes to the parish house, but it also goes to the church, and other churches are not being charged. And every time I go to a meeting, they ask me for a status, and I say, "I don't know." So it'd be helpful for me to know. So if you guys should take a look at that. And one thing that's occurred to me, which they went 15 years when nobody was in the house, and we paid the whole Woodardville, but one thing that's occurred to me is, if going forward and maybe there's a compromise, and say, "Okay, you can assume that part of it goes to the house and part of it goes to the church, and maybe we can split the bill or something," and then work out something that, something that would help all parties and bring the issue to a resolution. So I appreciate it, whatever you all can do.
Thank you.
I've got more.
Okay.
I want to thank the town. After the last meeting, and Bob Lissinger was here complaining about the house behind him, Gilpin Avenue, you all came up and cut the lawn, and that's much appreciated. Bob had a suggestion that may be more complicated than what he says about putting lean, cutting grass, but lean on properties, but it seems to me that somebody from the town could go to these banks and talk to them, and they may not be aware that this is an issue that, you know, it's an aesthetic appearance issue in the town. If you talk to them, if they're aware of it, they may be willing to address the problem. They may not, it occurred to me that they may not even be aware that it's a problem unless somebody talks to them. Those out of, those that are out of, those that are out of town or out of state, maybe a letter could be sent, and maybe you can form in such a way that's a veiled threat. If you don't do it, do something about it, you know, we could do it. But anyway, just my thought on it.
Actually, that's a great suggestion. Michelle, could you invite from one of our workshops, maybe the, I'm not sure if the banks have an information officer, maybe you could invite them to our workshop and get someone from TNC, Cecil Bank, Howard Bank, the Columbia Bank, and we'll have them here at a workshop, and you can let them know what is in reference to it. We just like to have, try to build, and I know Chip has some names of some folks, but let's let them show up. I think it's a great suggestion.
Don't forget JP Morgan.
Yes. We'll start here, we'll start here.
Another thing, I pay a lot of attention to what you say, and I see these piles of grass, and that bothers me, but we have the song of that. The other thing that I know, I've been in town a lot the last week, is these guys walking around without shirts on. And I know you brought it up, I wouldn't have even thought about it, but you brought it up a few years ago. And I would suggest that you guys pass an ordinance and make it whatever it's going to be, maybe you have a warning first, and then, you know, pass some kind of an ordinance, and the town police can walk up to these guys and say, "Hey, there's an ordinance."
We actually looked into that, and they came back that we can't do it. And our council can tell you why, but we cannot enforce someone not wearing a shirt. But what we can do is when we have a, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if we have a downtown car show, which we have tomorrow, and it's an Alliance event, now I don't, I'm not sure if they're going to be prepared for it tomorrow evening, but if they were to have their own, and it's being an event put on by another entity, and one of the rules is that you're not allowed to walk through there without any shirts on, then it could be enforced by the group that's running the show, and then if that person still does not want to put their shirt on, then I think we can ask for some assistance. Now, I'm not 100% sure if that's correct or not, but I believe that if it's, the way I interpreted it was, we could do that, but when a person's walking up and down the street without a shirt, there's nothing we can do. John, can you feed back on that a little bit, or?
Yeah, when it came, it comes up this time every year, and it's the same here for those guys. And I've looked into court decisions that go across the country, and it seems the more broad the ordinance is, the less inclined courts are to uphold those ordinances. If you just said, for example, can't have your shirt off in Elton, I can pretty much guarantee you the courts wouldn't uphold that. If it was very narrowly tailored, you're more inclined to have the courts uphold that kind of ordinance. Problem then becomes, how do you really enforce it? And is that the kind of thing you want the police department to be enforcing? I mean, that's a political decision, but it certainly, when we have need for additional police on empty spots, and we're trying to do our policing, the department's trying to police and be one chasing online guys without shirts on. It's unsightly, and people don't like it, I understand that, but that's kind of the trade-off. And the risk that you run is, you end up in federal court and you spend eighty-five years of your time.
Well, I bet if you go to other towns, Wilmington, Bel Air, I don't, I bet you don't see people walking around without shirts on. If you go downtown Wilmington, I don't think you'll see that. Maybe I'm wrong, I haven't been down there, but I would.
The case that was taken to federal court that we looked at was, it was a runner in Florida, they were running on the boardwalk, and it was an attorney, and they got, they had an ordinance that said, "No, you can't have to wear your shirt." And he disagreed, he was in an activity mode, and he won. He won in federal court, and they changed the ordinances, I'm sure it was Florida, it was Atlanta City, it's Florida.
No, it was Florida. So all attorneys could run around without a shirt on.
There you go.
I've looked at cases all over the country.
A lot I would suggest to you, that the people that walk around town without a shirt on, are not going to go to court. And if you had an ordinance, and somebody would say to them, "There's an ordinance," and we would suggest that you wear your shirt downtown, you could probably, you know, stop most of them. That's, that's where I'm coming, I'm not suggesting to put people in jail or anything like that, I'm just saying, and it's an ACLU issue and all these other things, but in, in life, there's a certain sense of propriety in doing things, you know, the right way, and, you know, and, so, and, you know, and if you go to the beach, yeah, you don't want a shirt, but this isn't the beach, so I'm just suggesting that you take another look at it.
In Ocean City, I got the report today, I came across it, in Ocean City, there's females going topless now in Ocean City, Maryland.
Hey, I'm going down.
There you go. And there's nothing they can enforce, they cannot enforce it.
I think that is absolutely.
It'll be, I'm sure it'll be in the news tomorrow. I just saw, it just came up on the wire that it's like 9th Street or 10th Street, they're going topless, there's great women in it, and the police couldn't do anything about it, in the city of Ocean City.
That cannot be.
I'm just letting you know what I saw today. Thank you.
That's freedom, right?
I think, though, it was wild when New Jersey, that passed an ordinance for their downtown. I'm almost positive, because of that problem of what Mayor just said, and they want to bring back their downtown, so I don't know.
Here's the dilemma, every one of those court cases were a result of an ordinance. A lot of places have ordinances, and not everybody ends up in federal court. The ones that do, spend over six, topless guys.
So it's a matter of us being sued? Is that what it will be?
Well, it's that enforceability. I don't know.
I mean, do you have to say like, "Okay, fine, we'll just let it go?" Like you can court, you say there's an ordinance, and then they say, "Oh, no, we're going to go to the court party." You, eh, okay, we'll drop the case. We can drop cases all the time.
I mean, you want it for twenty dollars, too.
Well, listen, we'll talk about this at another workshop. Anything else, sir?
I want to thank you all for passing the budget. I assume it's as is, the one I have done, got a couple weeks ago.
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Mr. Paul Detley, come on down, or you want to stand up? Councilman Detley?
I think I can stand up, everybody hear me? I just want to say that it's nice to see a group with the mayor and the town council agree on a budget. We've hammered our heads in our budgets and stuff, and we got right down to the wire, and I was like the lone man on the island. So I just want to say it's a pleasure to see how you guys work together, how you get something accomplished, and how it transpires into the town. And hopefully, you can work on the county, and we'll get it fixed over there. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. We are going to have, we're going to have a closed meeting this evening to talk to council and the staff about a consultancy. We're going to consult with council this evening, and I need a motion to have a closed meeting. And a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of a closed meeting? And we will not reconvene, so this meeting is adjourned.